All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Thank you, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Jason Valley of the Westerly Sun. He often covered these meetings and he passed away over this last week. Thank you. All right, before we get started, I just want to give a reminder to anyone, including town councilors, who wish to speak that they made you so at the recognition, sorry, from the presiding officer. The person shall direct to their remark to the presiding officer, not any other town councillor present or any other person present. This is from the Richmond Town Council Rules of Procedure available on the website. With that said, we'll get started with a public hearing. Anybody wanna ask for permission and get a motion on the floor? Go ahead, Mark.
Motion to open the public hearing concerning proposed amendments to Richmond Code of Ordinance, ten dot zero four dot zero zero five, Valley Lodge Estates, at Wood River Circle as a speed limit cannot exceed fifteen miles per hour.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on just opening public hearings? All right, we'll do roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Counselor Madnick?
Yes.
Counselor Palmigano?
Yes.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, so we have public hearing. This was brought up before council in November, I believe. Chief Johnson gave a brief overview that this was the only road in that neighborhood that was not, didn't have a posted speed limit. So that's why we're having a public hearing to amend the ordinances today. Any questions or concerns from council before we go to public? All right, hearing none. Anybody here have anything to say? All right, regarding the speed limit?
We're signing that.
Just go to the podium and state your name for the record.
Helen Sheehan, Richmond. I'm asking again that people please use their microphones.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, anybody online regarding the public hearing? Thank you, Erin. All right, we got nobody. Could I have a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Thank you. We got a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, so now, public hearing's closed. We need to approve the amendments for whatever council chooses. Anybody wanna ask for permission and get a motion on the floor?
A motion to approve the amendments as written.
All right, I'll second. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any council discussion? Hearing none, we'll go for a roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. All right, motion passes. Onto appointments and resignations. All right, number one, discussion consideration of Frank Rau. I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, for reappointment to town as the town sergeant with a term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the reappointment of Frank Rau to as town sergeant with term expiration December thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
Yes, please. So I was kinda curious what this role is, because I wasn't familiar with it, so I tried to educate myself. I just have a couple of questions that maybe we can answer. So I'm kinda curious like what the current role is of the town sergeant. I saw that the responsibilities are not defined in the charter. Typically, they preside over the financial town meeting, which we don't have anymore. I didn't notice in the town charter that the town sergeant is a paid position. Is, it's not a paid position. So what is the current role of the town sergeant?
It's fifty dollars a year, very minimal.
I did see that it is a requirement in Rhode Island general laws that towns have a town sergeant or a constable. Just kinda curious, what does our town sergeant actually do?
So, go ahead, Erin.
So, the town sergeant's required now that we don't have a financial town meeting to preside over the public hearing and charitable budget. They're also responsible for providing every warrant, posting every warrant for every election we had. So this past year, he was very busy at posting every warrant in three public places around town. So generally, that is the responsibility.
Awesome, thank you. Do we have any other comments or concerns from council? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. All right, discussion and consideration of Denise Stetson's resignation from the Affordable Housing Committee with regrets.
Motion to accept the resignation with regrets of Denise Stetson from the Affordable Housing Committee.
Second.
Thank you. Any council discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll go for our roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. All right, on to number three. Discussion and consideration of Mark Reynolds's resignation as town moderator.
Chair. Motion to accept. Thank you. Motion to accept with regrets the resignation of Mark Reynolds as the town moderator.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Onto our vote, Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Abstain.
Wilcox, yes. All right, discussion and consideration of Christopher Zangari's request for reappointment as town solicitor with a term expiring January thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Like to make a motion to approve the request of Solicitor Zangari for his reappointment to town solicitor with a term expiring January thirty first, two thousand twenty six.
Awesome.
Second.
Second, great. Any council discussion?
Yes, I don't see him here tonight, but I just wanna say that I've had a really good working relationship with Mr. Zangari since he's been appointed as town solicitor, especially as a member of the planning board, and I've enjoyed working with him.
Yeah, for sure, I'm gonna agree. He's been a pleasure to work with, brings a very calm, neutral presence to the council. And it's been a great year, so I was really excited to see him apply for reappointment. With that, any other council discussion? Counselor Dinsmore, vote please.
Yes.
Onto Madnick.
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. Discussion and consideration of Mike Cosellino's request for reappointment as town solicitor for the term expiring January thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Motion to reappoint Michael Cosellino as town solicitor with a term expiring January thirty one, twenty twenty six.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any council discussion?
Sure, I just wanna echo the same things I said about Mr. Zangari. I haven't known Mr. Cosellino very long, but in the few instances that we've, we've, you know, crossed paths, I've had a really good working relationship with him and I've enjoyed learning from him as well.
Thank you.
Agreed. All right, roll call vote, Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. All right, on to number six. We got discussion and consideration of Leslie Beat's reappointment to the Conservation Commission with a term expiring January thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Dan. Sorry, Jeff.
A motion to reappoint Leslie Beat to the Conservation Commission with the term expiration of January thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
Second.
Awesome, I have a motion and a second. Any council discussion? All right, hearing none. Leslie, I know you're here, you're doing a great job, keep it up. We'll go on to our roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right, on to number seven, discussion and consideration of Peter C. Burton's request to be appointed as a regular member from a business member to the Economic Development Commission with a term expiring January thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
Chair, can I just have a clarification?
Sure.
So when I read this, I just wanna be clear that Mr. Burton is not seeking reappointment as the business member on the EDC. At the same time, he is requesting appointment as a resident on the EDC. I wanna make sure that's clear.
Yeah, that's exactly what he's doing. So I think we'll have to handle it in two motions. One, accept a resignation, and then two, accept his reappointment or an appointment to the board. It's my understanding the reasoning was that the business member representative can be a non-resident, so he's looking to open up that position to a potential non-resident who's a business owner in the community who could then join the board. Which, at the time he applied, that was the only open position.
Do we need a motion? It's not, it's not really resignations, not a renewal for reappointment. Do we typically have to accept the notice of non-reappointment?
We have in the past.
Okay.
I guess that would be a question for the town solicitor.
Okay.
Thank you. So with that, could I have a motion from somebody? Go ahead, Mark. What?
I'll make a motion to, I guess, accept the resignation of Peter Burton as the business member of the Economic Development Commission and appoint him as a regular member of the Economic Development Commission with a term expiring January thirty one, twenty twenty seven.
Second.
Thank you. We got a motion and a second. Any further council discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll go for a roll call. Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. All right, discussion and consideration of Randall Jem's resignation as the Emergency Management Director. All right, I'll make a motion this time. I'll make a motion to accept Randall Jem's resignation as Emergency Management Director effective upon the hiring of a new Emergency Management Director.
Second.
Thank you. Just for quick clarification, the reason I included that in my motion is because he mentioned it in his resignation letter for a seamless transition, so I wanna make sure that's included. Any other further council discussion?
No.
All right, we'll go for our vote. Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. Okay. Onto the consent agenda. I would like to pull one C. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to pull?
Yes, one B, please.
All right, so we're gonna handle them individually. Did I kick it off with a motion from somebody?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda item one A.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any council discussion on this one? All right, Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yeah. And next was B, which was what you pulled down? You?
Yes, ma'am.
What do you got to change?
All right. In item F, the record states that I abstained from the vote to approve my resignation from the planning board, but after discussion with Solicitor Zangari, my vote was changed to yes. But the minutes record that I abstained. But secondly, and maybe this is something that was corrected afterwards, the record also states that Jim and Mark both abstained from their resignation approvals, but both voted yes at the time. So did we find out in more detail later on that we could not approve our own resignations?
What I recall from the meeting is that you did vote.
I abstained.
You abstained, but they voted in favor.
Well, I'm talking about, there's kind of two different things going on, but same, same idea. So with my resignation, I first abstained, and everyone kinda laughed at me. It's kinda funny. And I asked Solicitor Zangari to clear up if I could vote for my own resignation. And he said that it was an issue, so I asked to change my vote to yes. Later on, in the minutes with both Mark and Jim's resignations from their respective boards, they both voted in the affirmative. But it's recorded as an abstention.
Abstentions are used when you really just don't have enough information to do that? If you wanna go as far as to go like for an ethical reason, then you have to get an opinion from the ethics board, really, but go ahead, Mark.
No, I think Dan's point is that the minutes improperly recorded Jim's vote and my vote on each of our resignations as an abstention, and it should have been in favor, yes, and that he was, and for Dan's own resignation, he did change his vote to yes. So it's just, it's just the semantics of the way the minutes
Right.
record the roll call. It doesn't change the substance of anything, but
Right.
it's just for accuracy, I guess.
Thank you for clearing that up. I was not very clear again. I appreciate it.
You were definitely asking a question that was being answered. But, so with that, we can go for a motion to approve with those amendments, if you want.
Just because I haven't checked the minutes, Jim also voted in the affirmative and didn't abstain.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
So motion to approve the minutes of December fourth, twenty twenty four, special meeting as amended.
Second.
Thank you. We got a motion and a second. Counselor Dinsmore, we vote?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right. I have a few changes to the December seventeenth meeting. So bear with me. On page six, where we indicate, where we decided on the building committee members, it's also on page eight where we decided on the tax assessment board. It says that we made a motion, but it should be blank nominated blank. Because then we made the motions later. At first, it was just nominations, and then we made motions later, so I was looking to get those corrected. Then on page seven, before the vote of Chris, he was appointed to the Chair of Building Committee. I wanted to add that, and I'll quote, President Wilcox and Vice President Reynolds stated they were not voting against this person, but would prefer another applicant. That's just for clarity in the minutes. On page ten, right before item four, the request of Counselor Madnick is there again when it's higher on the page. That's just a very easy typo to have made, as somebody who does a lot of these things. Page eleven, I also wanted to add, the town administrator advised that there will be a new EMA director due to the recent resignation. I think that's important for context, so that way if somebody's reading the minutes, they'll understand why we tabled it, because it just didn't otherwise make sense, somebody reading the minutes. Another one, this is just for clarity. Right before, on page twelve, we were discussing the amendments to the Order of the Agenda. And right before the sentence where I advise that this doesn't change the hiring and firing aspect, again, just for context, I wanted to add that Counselor Dinsmore had asked if this was regarding interviews and resumes, just because my advice seems a little out of place without that. And this last one, I wouldn't correct if I didn't have all the other amendments, but the, on page thirteen, fifth paragraph down, across the street is a softball field, not a baseball field. Get corrected on that all the time. So with that, thank you for bearing with me. I'll do a motion to approve the minutes with those amendments.
I also have some amendments.
Can second it and then add it?
Second.
All right, thank you. What do you got?
Okay, so just a couple small grammatical things. Planning Board used to get me on this all the time. So in item E, David Bengston, his name is spelled incorrectly. It's spelled B E N S O N, but it should be B E N G T S O N. Oh, sorry. Let me go back. All right, I take my notes by items, not page numbers. My fault.
On council now, not planning board.
Oh, page two. Sorry, public forum, page two. And then bear with me, my notes are in order, so I should be able to find these.
Oh, I can probably.
Item F, page three. Fifth down, says discussion insured regarding previous maintenance. That should be ensued. And then H one, let me scroll down a little bit.
Page one is page five.
Yes, page five. So there are no minutes regarding the outcome of Ms. Angle's appointment to the Recreation Commission. So there was a motion made, and then it just says Ms. Angle was not present. Did Jim rescind the motion?
Well, there's no second, though.
So that's how it's
That's a good point, there's no
It just dies.
Would you have recorded a second, Erin, if there was one?
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Item H four, a little further down. So the, page six, the motion that I made to nominate Andrea, her name is spelled incorrectly, there should be an E after the R. Okay, moving forward, just bear with me, guys. Try to make this as quick as I can. Item J, new business. On the Okay, it's on page ten. There are two recordings of item three B. There's the one at the top of the page, and then further on, it looks like he was just, just, there's something floating there.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I also had the same comment about item J six for the EMA director. I couldn't recall, I wrote that it was Talia that told us that, so Talia or Karen. I just wanted it noted in the minutes that the reason was tabled because of the pending resignation. How you explain yourselves?
I think, yeah, I think that he is correct, but it was Talia. My mistake. Sorry for putting words in your mouth, Karen.
That's all I have. Thank you for bearing with me.
All right, anybody else have anything? We will go for our vote. Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Okay, we are on to public forum. The purpose of public forum is to give members of the public an opportunity to address the town council members regarding items that are not on the agenda. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. You'll have one opportunity to address the council during public forum. This is out of courtesy of others who wish to ensure we have equal time for all. There will be a timer, and I will indicate when your time is up and ask that you finish your thoughts. If you need more time, you are welcome to submit your concerns in writing to the town clerk to be included as a part of the record in communications section of the agenda. Again, all comments should be directed to the presiding officer and not any other person present for the town council rules. So, do we have anybody who would like to speak in public forum? I saw Bob first, then we'll go for Masheen. And I hope my phone timer's nice.
Officer Richmond, don't get nervous. This is just a simple thing that I've noticed over the years. Our dump stickers. We used to have a dump sticker that used to appear to the windshield. I understand why we don't have those anymore, because people could sell a car to somebody out of town and they could use our dump. But the ones that we currently have have a little plastic holder with a thing that fits over a mirror. Most new cars don't have the ability to hang that on a mirror, because they've got these big box things that, that, oh, the thing, is there, is there any way that we can get some other dump sticker? They know me there in my truck and everything else, they don't even ask me anymore. But I have to keep it in the, you know, in a compartment and pull it out if somebody new is working the thing. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, go ahead, Masheen.
Helen Sheehan, Richmond. Two councils ago, the council allocated, I think it's eighty-six thousand dollars for safety measures at Richmond Elementary School. They were only partially completed. And when we were at, we asked during the last council, it was because it was expected that the bond would pass and it wouldn't be necessary to finish those safety precautions. So now I'm asking you if you would please ask the superintendent to complete the safety measures that were agreed to two councils ago.
Thank you.
Chair.
Anybody else in public forum? Go ahead, Adam.
Just remind me of, am I able to just clarify on that statement, or would you prefer I wait?
It's tough, because we had a lot of discourse and difficulties last council with public forum and people going back and forth, so I just feel like it's a little bit of a slippery slope. of a slippery slope, but I know exactly what you're gonna say, so I think.
I, I just don't recall that it was not complete, and I believe to my knowledge everything was accounted for.
Right.
If there's information the public has that is different than that, I would be more than happy to see it.
Right, I'd like to see that as well, if there's more information than, than that. For sure. Anybody else have anything else they say? Go ahead. I know your name. When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record.
Gary Parker of Richmond, Madam President, thank you very much. Just want to compliment you all, especially Mr. Palmigiano, on his initiative to get economic development going. I saw your, your goals memo, and that was like, that's pretty, pretty phenomenal. So, so thanks for the leadership, and, and thank you for all for supporting him and, and, you know, and the whole, as a team to kind of develop for economic development. Just a couple of things. I know you're gonna cover that, I believe, later on in the, in the agenda tonight, so I won't elaborate. Just wanted to say thanks so much for, you know, getting that ball rolling.
All right, thank you.
Chair? I want to point out that, to Mr. Parker, that the communication received, we actually won't discuss tonight. So if he has things that he wanted to say in public forum, he should be able to say them.
Yeah, yeah, if you'd like. I mean, I.
No, if you're not gonna talk about it, we do it later.
This is another thing, it's a little tricky, because our town council rules and procedures say you shouldn't talk about things that are on the agenda, but GCLU doesn't quite agree, so that's something that I want to look into a little further, probably not for tonight. I mean, I think you should go ahead, to his point. The communications are not something that's gonna be discussed, but the, we're getting an update on that initiative later today. So I don't know where it stands, but I'm gonna find out where it stands.
Hold it for my.
Sure.
Balance of my time.
I think you've had three minutes left, as I reset the timer.
Madam President, thank you very much. Yeah, it's just when it comes to economic development, the concepts of, to get an idea as to what you're really thinking about economic development. Is it that we're underdeveloped as a town, you know, that we're looking for to increase the tax revenue? Are we increasing well-being among the residents of the town? And just as something I think we, most of us discussed before individually, the idea that as economic development goes, having studied it and then researched it real time in West Africa for two years, the idea of indigenous economic development, stuff that we actually are sitting on, on our own properties here, I think is very relevant, rather than the concept of a foreign direct investment. You know, the old looking for the big box to buy out cycle brothers, that kind of thing. So, yeah, I just want to, I think, I think as you go on with this economic development stakeholder plan and things like that, just the idea of who are the real stakeholders, I think is an important piece to that, because we've got a lot of people who own property, which they're, you know, we could produce a lot, you know, there's people in our town making their own food, making their own dairy, making their own everything, and that could go to market, quite frankly. So, just things, a lot of, we're sitting on a lot of production capacity. So, anyway, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody else in the public? Erin, anybody online? All right, we will move on to reports. Go ahead, Karen.
Thank you. So, you may not know that Erin is currently short one part-time clerk employee. That was an 18-hour position. And as you know, also, we're trying to put together a municipal court, which would entail a clerk, someone who would actually sit and clerk the meetings, but also be responsible for the accounting of everything that's going on within the clerk, who's, you know, who needs a notice to appear, those kinds of things that go along with clerking the meeting. And so Erin came to me with a great idea, which was, you know, if she could make her part-time employee a full-time employee, she would be happy to take on the responsibility of clerking the municipal court from within her office. So I know, you may remember initially, she was like, we don't have the bandwidth to take on another thing, but given that, you know, it would assist her with getting a full-time employee, which I think would also have that person being there all the time, anything elections that came in, they could handle. It would, you know, before, when that person was only there 18 hours, someone else would have to handle it. Now, when he or she is there full-time, they could handle it whenever it came in. It's not like, you know, okay, this is my municipal court time, I can't deal with it, obviously. So I do think it would be beneficial to the office, and financially, I think it would end up being a wash, because we probably would have given the municipal court clerk more hours than 12. You know, because if it's a full-time person, we do have to offer them benefits. That is one difference between having two part-time people and one full-time person, but I would like to think that it will essentially be a wash.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I do have a question. Just, the municipal court is going to collect fees, which is then going to pay for the clerks and everything that it needs. So how is that gonna work through our budget when the part-time clerk would be paid to the clerk's department and the municipal court would be paid through the municipal court kind of line item? Like, is it gonna, is that gonna get complicated and hairy and?
No, because you, the municipal court will just be revenue.
Okay.
And.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Do we have any other questions from council?
Yes, have we actually performed a cost analysis to actually understand that we do have the money in the budget to cover the change from part-time to full-time employee? Because that was something that wasn't presented to us.
Yeah, no, there's nothing, there's no actual cost analysis. It's just based on knowing that we would pay those two people about the same amount of money, and knowing that this one's 18, and that one probably would have also been at least 15. You know, I mean, I didn't actually write out the numbers, but I think intuitively, we, we agree that it would be a wash.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna say thank you, and open it up to any other questions?
Does that also include the salary benefits? So, non-salary compensation?
Yeah, well, and it's hard to know also what those are gonna be, because it depends on whether or not the person needs them. Because if a person needs them, you know, and they're single, it's one rate, if they need them, and they're two people, it's a second rate, and if they need them and they're a family, it's a third rate even still, and if they choose not to take them, but choose the buyback, it's a buyback, it's a way lesser rate.
Okay.
So, Counselor Dinsmore, you have a question as well?
Yeah. So how, we haven't even had the municipal court yet, don't even know any projections of monies at all. So how, how can we talk about it and put it in there saying that this would pay for this and this would pay for that, when you don't really know?
Well, it was, it was decided to do on a trial basis. There were some projections that were done by our former finance director, that she believed it would be pretty much, the whole thing would be a wash between revenue and expenses. There's really only one, one way to find out. I think the first year, because there's such a backlog, you know, I'd like to think that we may make off it. I don't know if that's necessarily the case, but I don't think we're gonna take a loss in the first year, because there was such, if you might come back me up, a lot of those cases are his, that would have been going to court in Wakefield, and essentially will come here instead.
Which makes sense.
And I think, sorry, one more thing. It was also discussed, when, when Talia spoke about it, was how difficult it is for their department currently, when they're just back and forth constantly with people, it notices a violation, and, and frustrated residents when they are the one that makes the complaint, and nothing gets done, because the courts are so slow, or we can't get, you know, whatever. So I think there's also, even if there's a slight cost to it, I think there's a benefit in that we have satisfied residents.
Right, for sure. And I don't want us to digress too much into the municipal court, because that's not what was noticed on the agenda. The agenda notice had just the responsibilities of the town clerk's office. But I don't want us to end up going into a back and forth regarding the municipal court. But with reallocating the responsibilities, like only, I think, I think I kind of share a little bit of your concern, Counselor Dinsmore, where we don't know where it's gonna be. So how do we know for sure that the responsibility would only be, I forgot who was 12 hours and who was 18, but how do we know for sure if the municipal court's only gonna be 18 hours, it could be 24, it could be 30. It just, I mean, I think it's, I wanna free up as much time as I can in the clerk's office, because I know how busy they are now, swamped they've been with the elections. So I want to approve it. I just have my reservations, but I also, now I'm just kind of thinking out loud. I think we could, like, change that line, is gonna be my next question, where like, we could reallocate responsibilities if we find the municipal court is more work.
Absolutely.
Than we anticipate.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Right, true. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was, I was gonna ask Erin a question, but she, maybe she's gonna answer it before I ask it, so maybe she had something to say.
All right, go ahead, Erin.
So, so we've had a vacancy in the office since October 2nd. So, my office completely changed gears to make the election happen, which required myself and deputies to spend countless hours that were not accounted for in the budget, because it was absorbed because of salary and compensation time for the others, but mainly myself. This is the second election that I've been here since, since I've started here, that I've had to run the election solely because the part-time person left. Elections in this day and age has greatly changed, as everybody has seen, and the support, the State Board of Elections is saying, you need a full-time person. It's the first time in my career that the central voter registration system got so backed up that they called and asked why it's so backed. So we, it was all hands-on-deck approach, but it's not sustainable. And many people think that elections just happens at one time. But in my memo, every day, every day, we are processing voter registrations. And it, and a lot of it is coming from the real ID, a lot of people don't think of, but that is completely flooding our system that has to be processed. So when you went from a middle name, a middle initial to a middle name, and then say, oh, I don't want to be a middle name, so you go back to a middle initial, that has to be processed and mailed and done. So it's not just recruiting poll workers, working the 16-hour day, working the 20 days before, it's all of that. My office has also received quite an increase in probate. Our probate filings used to go from three cases a month. Now, on the regular, they're 12, they're contested, we have special hearings, and they, and, and our office handles all of that. So the workload, where I think we had a part-time position added, was almost 15 years ago now in Richmond. So we have two full-timers, myself and the 18-hour position. So it's not just about municipal court. However, that was kind of a olive branch to get things moving, because we did discuss 12 hours for municipal court that it would take to get it done. And while I haven't done municipal court, I'm pretty familiar with what would happen. Hockington, we've, you know, we look at all the time, and I think that it would be kind of a true accounting of what Richmond would be. But I'm gonna be selfish in this and say, ultimately, this change is a much needed addition to our office.
It is. For sure. I agree that it is, which is why I'm just concerned about, you know, getting somebody in who's gonna relieve some of the pressure, but then also take on more pressure. I don't know, but I guess, like Karen said, it's changeable. So, we'll trust your judgment and see where it goes.
And the budget line item, it's been vacant since the second. Our former deputy clerk, who retired, she was a poll worker that came in and has helped out. So she's been working three hours, six hours, one week, maybe, during the election, 12 hours at the most, but since October 2nd, it hasn't really been a budget and line item. And so, we won't know what it is, like Karen said, until we can recruit and see what that person may need. And that's why you're talking like, if we advertised this week, I'd keep it open for a minimum of three weeks. We have one, if we have an ideal candidate, we have one meeting in February, more like, we wouldn't get it on until March. The person wouldn't start till the end of March, April, and you're talking about three months in this current budget cycle. So it would be budgeted for going forward.
That's what I want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council questions, officers? Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I just want to weigh in. I, I think, you know, what you're doing is you're adding flexibility to the office. You don't have one person, like Erin said, who, you're the elections clerk, but if she's, he or she is not there, then someone else has to do, start the task, hand it off to the elections clerk when they come back in, and they probably have to redo part of it, so it's very inefficient. And, you know, as Erin said, the, the demands of the office are growing. We've, we've had a part-time elections clerk, and they never, they don't make it through, we lose them. So you're gonna get, have a full-time position, you, she can allocate responsibilities as, as the needs change. At election season, it's probably more elections than it is municipal court. You, you, you know, you divide it out to other people, and you're gonna attract a higher caliber pool of candidates to a full-time position that offers benefits than you are to a part-time position. And as, you know, I, I think it will be borne out, we're gonna need these hours filled, and I'd rather see them filled by a full-time employee, because we can get a higher caliber person, or a person who's high caliber and will stay, because they're not going somewhere else, because they can get benefits. So I think in order to, you know, if we want to keep good people, and that's always a struggle here, we have to be willing to make it worth their while to stay. A great work environment gets you so far, but at some point, you're gonna do what's right for yourself and your family, and if the town next door, or, you know, up 95 is offering you benefits, you gotta do what's best for yourself. So I really think this would position us much better to not just fulfill the, the demands of the, of the office, but to, you know, maintain, you know, the high caliber employees that we have.
For sure. Any other council questions or concerns? We do not, oh, yes, Erin, sorry. It's okay.
So another thought I had, if we fulfill the role, we support, a lot of our boards that are non-staffed work with Conner at posting. However, their responsibility is to post on the Secretariat State and all the other entities, and sometimes those postings don't happen, and we have to cancel the meeting and then restructure and then do all that. So if I, if we had another support, more staff in the office, I believe my office could provide more support to our non-staffed boards and commissions, which I think they would greatly appreciate, because they're all volunteers.
Right.
And, you know, if we could take some of the burden off of posting and making sure the minutes, certainly, we're not gonna draft agendas and minutes for them, but I think we could provide more supportive services than court workers, because we have, I mean, 20s that are not staffed, and they're all volunteers in the community, and they don't work in open meetings law, and it changes all the time. So I really think we can also
For sure, thank you. So we do not yet have a motion on the floor. Does anybody want to make a motion? Mark?
I'll make a motion to change the assistant clerk hours to be a full-time position, and to allocate responsibilities within the town clerk's office.
Second.
Thank you. We got a motion, a second. Any further council discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll go to our vote. Counselor Dinsmore?
No.
Madnick?
Yes.
Palmigiano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. All right, thank you. Onto Chief Johnson's report. Go ahead, chief.
Good evening, folks. Happy New Year. Happy New Year, chief. Nice to be in a room where people aren't coughing. It's very odd. Request tonight, it is to have the council consider promoting Corporal Jeff Vaughn to the rank of sergeant, because that position was vacated with the passing, the tragic passing of Sergeant Michael Maureen, October 20th of 2024. Corporal Vaughn has been in his current rank for the last four and a half years, working third shift and reliable with the schedule, calm under pressure. Some of the things that come to mind, you know, what, I didn't put this in executive session for consideration, because I didn't want to delve too much into job performance and things like that. There is no other corporal on the department currently that would be eligible to compete for a promotion. He's the only corporal we have right now, because of a battle transfer that occurred in the fall. So based on that, I'm asking that the council consider promoting him as sergeant. It would be a step one in that rank. The rank that was vacated was step three, which is a higher pay scale, so it's already in the budget. This would allow us to post and have a competitive promotion process for two vacant ranks of Corporal, if this was approved. The Washington County Fair, the traffic that we have experienced over the last several years, has always been a concern for many people that live here and for the police department, safety-wise. With the addition of the roundabout, we had additional concerns as to how that was going to function. Corporal Vaughn took it on himself to take the leadership role as the OIC for traffic this past year. Lieutenant John Arnold. Lieutenant John Arnold recognized his leadership in that capacity and the success we had in really not having any significant backups. There are some other examples, but I I don't think it's necessary. I'm asking that you consider this promotion of Corporal Vaughn to the rank of sergeant, as there is no other eligible corporal to apply for it as well. And I, if it's approved, I would ask that it be retroactive to the date of December twentieth, twenty twenty-four. The rank was vacated in October, uh, but I think December twentieth, which is his anniversary date for hire of two thousand, would be the appropriate place to have him promoted.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Uh, so motion to authorize the promotion of Jeffrey Vaughn to the rank of sergeant, retroactive to December twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. All right, any council discussion? All right, uh, seeing them. Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mad Nick?
Yes.
Hamishano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. Congratulations.
Very much, House. I appreciate it. Uh, I will arrange for a future date for him to be penned here. That'd be a brief ceremony. It's something we traditionally do when someone's promoted. He is not one for attention, does not like to be the center of it, but we'll bring him in here and.
He's gonna be on YouTube now. Thank you so much. All right, on to number three, Finance Director's Report. Danielle Andrews, are you still here? Oh, yes, you are.
First time, I don't know what you guys need. They change work for everybody.
They work for me. How's everyone else feeling about these dates? Here, nothing, no.
Those are regular, the the public hearing dates are regularly scheduled, town council meeting dates, right? Yeah, that's fine.
And then the budget referendum will be held on a Tuesday. There's a lot of feedback. It's traditionally on Monday because the financial company, by charter, was on Monday, and so June third is a Tuesday.
I noticed that. That's a very positive change. I like it. Um, so could we have a motion to approve all these dates, please, from a member of council? Go ahead, Mark.
Motion to approve all of these dates. Not lined by Danielle on the agenda.
Thank you. So you got a motion, a second. Any further council discussion? All right, Counselor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mad Nick?
Yes.
Hamishano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. All right, on to Carmen Bell's report. Is she still here? Oh, there she is. Um, so we have the discussion of the annual senior and a hundred percent disabled exemption analysis for the tax year twenty twenty-five. Do you wanna give an overview of anything, or do you want me to open up to council discussion? It's entirely up to you.
Um, I mean, I can just, this is something that has to be brought before the council every year because it's in the town ordinance. To be brought before the council every year.
Point of origin, are you gonna be able to be heard? Um, just, do you wanna go to the podium just in case?
Yep, that's really all I'm gonna say, but. So this is on the agenda because it is required by ordinance to be on the agenda every year. You guys have my information. I did suggest a zero percent increase on the income, but again, this, this is a, it's just my recommendation.
Karen, I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you know what the breakdown is of the senior and elderly population relative to the total population of Richmond?
I.
So what?
What I have on that.
Sorry, let me finish this question, maybe?
Sorry.
I just wanted to say that, might have missed it, but what I see in your chart is that we have the percent of population that applied relative Richmond. So my question is different. What is the population that is counted as seniors and elderly relative to the population of Richmond?
I do not know what the senior population is in Richmond.
Is it even possible to get that information?
I have no idea. I don't know how I would do something like that. Um, there might be something online with census, you know, but I don't know. I don't have that information.
A few head nods in the audience.
Well, I'm wondering if maybe like, um, the Rhode Island fact book might have that information, um, housing fact book, something like that may. But I'm sure it's something that we could find as we're working through this. Do I have any other questions from council? Any concerns?
Just Carmen, um, just so I make sure I understand, so th- this exemption is available to seniors and those who are a hundred percent disabled regardless of age, or no?
A hundred percent, correct. A hundred percent disabled is regardless of age.
Right.
Seniors for sixty-five and over.
Okay, so it's not just a senior exemption. If you're a hundred percent disabled and you meet the income limits, you you're eligible for this program. Okay. And again, just so I understand your your figures currently, giving the exemptions to those that applied, we are exempting about four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars from the tax rolls.
Correct.
So in other words, we're giving four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar benefit to those folks who are replying and are eligible for this program, right? Okay.
We have any other questions from council down this end? All right, um, I've spoken with Carmen about the, um, exemption a lot, just because the last two councils, we did this, where we 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 paused it and we did absolutely nothing. And it's my understanding, just from my conversations with her, that if we did not do that, that the income levels would be a lot higher than they are now. Like, what is it, ninety thousand-ish?
Close to me.
It it was close to ninety thousand. So while I supported not doing the increase in the past, I just don't see myself doing that a third year in a row. Um, we don't have to make a decision on this tonight. We can discuss it further. We can workshop different options and see into something up and up until, um, April, really. I mean, we would have to time in public hearings because it is an ordinance change, um, but maybe even for for future years. I just, I don't know. I think it's it's a lot of money to make them one year and and get a a pretty good exemption. The biggest, uh, feedback I get at the doors when we talk about, um, the exemption is the household income portion of this, where people are being looked at for their entire um, household income. So if you have, um, an elderly couple who need to have their children live with them for whatever reason, that's their business, not ours, now they're not eligible for the exemption because those people now work. And a lot of that, that's the biggest complaint I got about, um, this at the door. So I would like to maybe not make a decision on it tonight and think about different options for the future, just to be able to give our seniors something, not take anything away, and, I don't know, help those who need it most as well. The the ones by by freezing it and not increasing, we're hurting the people at the bottom of that sliding scale the most. Um, so I'm not sure what direction I'm thinking about taking it, but like I said, I wanna do absolutely nothing with this today. I don't wanna prove it. Don't wanna dismiss it.
And I've, I've, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, sorry. Go ahead. I was just rambling.
I mean, I've got ideas that I could share. I just, it's, I'd
Yeah.
Rather just keep looking at ideas.
For sure.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Would you like to tail this to a certain date, or what are you, are you thinking of, uh, tailing and then reintroducing it?
Yeah, I would say we could do a motion to file, then it could be reintroduced when ready. Um, that's what I'll do. If then, I, but I don't wanna cut off any other counselors if anybody else has any comments or concerns about the exemption. But I think I've heard from everybody or offered it. But Mark?
Well, it, there's a th- there's a timeline as far as applications, which is February?
April twenty-fifth is the deadline.
Well, there's no way we're gonna make a change between now and April twenty-fifth.
Right.
Um, so I, you know, I would, be- because it's been frozen for two of two prior years, I would support a very modest increase in the income levels for this year. And then between now and next year, we can have Carmen workshop some ideas about some things that we can do to make the program more beneficial. Um, the thing that that's, that that really jumps out to me, um, and if you look at the materials that are attached to the agenda, um, the the program that we offer is far more beneficial than the our neighbors, including Hockington. And, uh, you know, I think they're our best comparator tax-wise and for other, a lot of other things. Um, you know, our, uh, our program is far more beneficial than theirs. So I I feel like we're, even though we have an increase at the past two years, we're giving a good benefit to those folks that need it, but where we've frozen it for two years, um, I think we need to do something to to make a very modest increase. And then let's look at the whole thing before January, you know, or in the, in the fall and try to come up with a program and a new ordinance going going forward so people can also prepare. So that's just, that's my two cents.
For sure. Thank you. Yeah, ordinances take time because of public hearings and and everything else that it entails. And you're, you're exactly right. We are much, um, more generous to the residents here than other nearby communities, right down to the percentage off they get. That's what I noticed the biggest thing. Our residents can can get twenty percent off to sixty percent off where other residents are starting at ten percent, um, or even just a flat rate. So there's a lot of different options, a lot of different ways to go about it. So for now, I'll do a a motion to postpone to the next meeting. Is that enough time to kinda layer on stuff, or should we go for February first meeting?
I don't think.
First meeting in February. What do you think, Carmen? What do we want? What do you think, Mark?
You want, you want.
Well, I mean, we're gonna like workshop ideas.
There's no, I don't think there's any way you're gonna get a new ordinance in place by April.
So then we wouldn't be able to increase it either.
Why not?
Because it's.
Why can't we increase it now?
Because this is, oh, today.
Yeah, increase it now. And then, be, like I said, come whenever, the fall, after the summer, wh- or whenever Carmen's ready. So we have enough time. We then consider, I mean, I know we're technically amending the ordinance by changing the
Yeah.
the income levels, but I think we we can do that short-term. So I guess if you wanna put that off, you know, obviously, we can schedule a public hearing and do all that. So I guess we should at least schedule a public hearing on amendments, new ordinance, um. I I I, like I said, I think we should do something because it's been two years of zero for folks. And I think we should give that, we should do a very modest, you know, inflation's been low, at least for the past year. It wasn't so low the years before that. So I think, you know, and I'm talking, you know, two, three percent is what I'm, what I'm thinking. But that's just off the top of my head. But so I, so I agree. Let's get, let's get a public hearing scheduled to deal with what we're gonna do short-term. And then I think we need to look at a more comprehensive
Yeah.
over, you know, um, uh, review of the ordinance and really
Yeah.
revamp it if necessary.
For sure. But typically, we would see the ordinance when we, um, advertise it for public hearing. So that's why I was gonna postpone it to the next meeting so that we could see what the, what the increase would be and then go from there. Does that timeline make sense?
That's fine.
Okay. Um, go ahead, Erin.
So you may wanna give some parameters for the solicitor to work with Carmen on what the amendment would be. And then it would come back with, in draft form, and then I think you'd have a fiscal impact. And then you would see it, and then you could schedule a
For sure.
public hearing.
Exactly. Right. So what kind of percentage were you thinking?
Like I said, I'm, I was thinking two to three, but I'm open to any other suggestions. That's just me. Have you, have you looked into what the inflation rate has been over the last year? It's been around three percent. Um, I'd like to see what that number is.
So, um, Yeah, for sure. Um, sorry, I mean, to cut you off, Dan. Um, do you wanna continue?
No.
All right, you're good. Um, go ahead, Karen.
The social security, um, increase in the COLA for this year is two and a half. So you're right.
Right. Okay, so maybe two and a half sounds fair. Sounds like it because there's no objection. Um, so we'll.
Is it, Madam Chair, is it possible
Go ahead.
to have a variety of different percentages that we presented us, and then we can decide at that meeting how to proceed? Or do we have to decide what percentage you wanna see now so that staff can work on the ordinance? I don't have an issue looking at a variety of different percent modifications in the fiscal impact study. To get an understanding of what that's going to do to the staff. I think that's worthwhile because that gives us some options to decide. Well, maybe two to three percent is not, maybe that's reasonable, maybe it's not reasonable. And I think it's worth at least seeing the differences. So that's how I work. I wanna see the data.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Carmen.
If the higher, it's, it's hard to get a fiscal impact for changing the income. Um, because it's, if you change the seventy-seven thousand, seven ninety-five by three percent, whatever that is, eighty thousand, I don't know who's out there whose income is eighty or less. You know what I mean? Um, so.
Right.
That's difficult. I mean, if I, all I have is the information I have from last year and their incomes.
Right.
I don't know what's gonna change coming up.
Thank you, Carmen. Jim, have you, someone say, you've been trying to get my attention for my life, help guys?
No, I was just saying, I was just gonna concur with, um, Counselor Mad Nick in the sense of just to try to, to see that financial impact on a scale of the one, two point five, or the four, to have a way to understand what that would be before we made a decision.
For sure.
Thank you.
All right, any other council comments, questions? All right, you wanna form that into a motion for us, Mark? No pressure.
So you
So we need to.
You want specific options presented, and then we're gonna decide what amendment, amended ordinance we want to be um, scheduled for public hearing? That we, is that what?
I think that's what the council's looking for. We'll vote on it. I mean, I'm, I'm.
So I, I make, I, I, I make a motion, um, to, uh, ask the town staff to provide us with, uh, projections concerning the impact of a, uh, two and a half percent increase in the income levels.
Go ahead, Carmen. I think.
I'm just, I don't know how I can.
I, I know. I agree with, I agree with you. I, I don't.
I don't know what everybody's income is.
Right. I don't.
I was just going for some kind of motion to get us to move forward. Um, I'll make it. Then, do we, we wanna increase it. I don't know. This is why I wanted to postpone it a little longer because there are other options too. Like, we have a lot of different categories here. So we could even go into as far as merging them together to have a, a sixty percent, fifty percent, get rid of the, anything with a five. Like, there's a lot of different options. So I think at this point, um, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna throw a motion on the floor to table this to the following meeting. And back to my original question, is that enough time to weigh those options?
That's enough time for me to to look at merging some of the, the categories.
Perfect.
Again, that, if we're gonna change income, there's really no way for me to
Right, projected. I get that.
But if our income stays the same, I can look at what it was last year and see if we, if what we're thinking for this year, apply it to last year's numbers to see kind of what the difference is.
All right, so the motion was to ask our, uh, tax assessor to amend or or prepare a draft amended tax exemption that will adjust the, um, assessed values um, to be even ten percent, and we'll see what that looks like. Can I have a second?
What was the motion again?
Motion to ask our tax assessor to amend the ordinance or create a draft ordinance, um, to change the levels of income, level, the, a percent assessed value to equal ten percent. So it'd be sixty, fifty, forty, thirty, twenty.
Can I say another? I'm sorry. I don't know this. I think, yes, okay. I can certainly do that. Um, the one I was working on was just the last four merging fifty-five and sixty and forty-five and fifty. Um, and, but yeah, I mean, I can do, once I have it all in there, it's, it's easy to, to, to get numbers.
Play around with it.
However many you wanna do.
Right, last four.
Do you need a second? Is discussion done?
I didn't get a second, but it was fully unclear too. So should I clarify it?
Please, please.
All right, motion to ask our tax assessor to, uh, create a draft ordinance that will change the percent assessed values to equal tens for the top four categories. Way easier than going down the list. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any further council discussion on that specific option for this tax assessment?
What do you mean by eight?
Um, if you look at the ordinance, it goes from sixty, fifty, forty. So we would like, kinda just change the categories from sixty percent assessed value off to fifty-five percent assessed value off fifty percent, forty-five percent, forty percent. So you'd kinda remove the, anything to visit or anything that ends in a five, except the last one, because we, she requested the top four.
Okay, and what are we going to get to be able to judge and make a determination on the?
Well, what's difficult with that, and she's explained it, is that we don't know how many people will apply. We don't know how many people will apply until the deadline, really. So it it really is. And and I understand because I would want that information as well, but all we could really do is go off of the information we had last year. Kind of assume who would have come in this year. You really had a lot of time, maybe you could guess based on voter records, but then you don't know their income levels. Like, it would just be like really a shot in the dark. So it really would be a guess. Um, so I don't think that we should ask for her to do that again, because I think it's been explained a few different ways that we can't get those kind of projections that we all really want, but can't have.
She just told us that she can make assumptions based on the.
She just told us that she can make assumptions based on the information she has from the prior year.
Right.
If she can do that, state clearly what your assumptions are. We will review it and then determine what kind of impact it has on the town. That is all I'm asking. I think that is very simple. I think you know what you're doing, and I'm gonna trust that we're gonna get that information to be able to make an informed decision when we see this in two weeks.
For sure. Any further council discussion?
No.
So
Go ahead, Mark.
So the putting it off two weeks is just to discuss more?
Because we're gonna be able to see it.
I understand. I'm just making, it's just discuss more. It's not a public hearing. It's not anything.
Right.
Discuss more. Okay.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Madnick.
Yes.
Pomashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. Thank you, Carmen. All right, on to our land trust report. Are you ready? Do you have anything for us?
Nope.
All right. So we have our land trust report. They are, actually, I do have a question for you. So if you want to move to the podium, just because I, I had a question. I don't know if other council does. My only question was, where specifically on Hillsdale is this? Because I, I looked through, I didn't see an address, and maybe I missed it.
Okay, so it's at the corner of one thirty-eight in Hillsdale. There's one house on the corner and the property gosh, I wish I had my map. The property, it has frontage along one thirty-eight, and then there's that little corner cutout, and then it also has frontage on Hillsdale. And it's approximately a seventy-five acre parcel. It's owned by the Millar family. It's in the Millar family trust. And we applied in early twenty twenty-three through a program that NRCS was offering, the Natural Resource Conservation Service, to fund conservation easements on properties in, in, with willing landowners. So the Millars would continue to own the property, but the land trust would hold an easement.
Right.
So that it would be like a development easement. So the property could not be developed in the future, but it would still be in private holdings. And NRCS would be paying, they would provide funding to the town to pay for that easement. It's basically purchasing the development rights in a sense.
Awesome. Thank you so much for answering that question.
Yeah.
Did any other council have a question?
How, how big is the parcel again? I'm sorry.
It's approximately seventy-five acres.
Is it, does it meet, join up with any other conserved lands?
Yeah, so it actually circles around and at the north and west of Hillsdale, it connects to the Decopita estate to the north. And then even though, you know, one thirty-eight is there to the south, it then becomes, there's other DEM land and TNC land to the south. So it is a corridor. So when we applied for the funding, it was a competitive process, but we listed both the fact that it provides a wildlife corridor, it protects the aquifer and groundwater resources, and also protects forest and open space in our rural character. And so we listed those values and we were awarded funding. But this is now part of the process. We didn't realize we have all of this federal paperwork that we have to fill out.
Yeah.
Giving the taxpayer ID for the town and all that kind of stuff. And so the request is that as the land trust representative that I can sign that paperwork on behalf of the town, and I'm working with Danielle and Karen to make sure that we fill it all out properly and provide the necessary paperwork that they need in order to transfer the funds.
Great, thank you, Counselor Dinsmore. You had a question as well?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if the if the funding that we received paid for the whole thing.
Yeah, actually, half of it is being paid for by the NRCS, and then Rhode Island DEM has has already approved the other half of the funding. We are waiting to get the final appraisal before we know how much, but they've already approved sort of a estimate. What the land trust has committed to is long-term stewardship. So we'll have to oversee and monitor to make sure that the terms of the agreement are being adhered to. And we have agreed to pay for the appraisal. And we'll have to pay to do the boundary survey and some of the other work that needs to be done. And so the land trust discussed internally and voted because of the priority of the parcel and the fact that the, the actual protection is being paid for, that we were willing to pay for that, that other work that needs to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you. So council can get a just, a motion.
Madam Chair, get
Sure, go ahead.
A question. Well, I'll get your attention. I just pulled up the GAS real quick.
Yeah.
This, this connects from Decopita all the way down into nature conservancy properties. Is there any plans to connect those with the trail system, anything for recreation?
So because it's gonna remain privately owned, we won't be having a trail system added to the parcel yet. If we were purchasing the title like we have for some of the other properties, then we would be we, we try to always provide public access when we own the parcel. This is new to us. We've never done this. We've never just paid for the conservation easement without taking ownership. So this is our first example of doing that.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And anybody else? So could I have a motion? Jim?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to authorize the Richmond Rural Preservation Land Trust to complete the documentation provided by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Farm Security Agency in order to receive previously awarded funding for acquisition of a conservation easement on property located on Hillsdale Road in Richmond with authorization for Susan Clayton to sign.
Second.
Thank you. We got a motion and a second. Any further council questions or discussion? All right, Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Yes, Madnick.
Yes.
Pomashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. Thank you for answering our questions, for being on the land trust as well.
Thanks.
Yeah, the roll call is alphabetical, because that's what Robert Rules wants you to do when you do a roll call vote. So that's how we get that from. But before we get into new business, I just want to give a reminder about asking for recognition before you speak from the presiding officer. That's really important to make sure that all voices are heard. Because if two people want to speak at the same time and one person just keeps going, somebody gets left out, and I don't want to see that happen. I want all voices to be equally heard in, in our meetings. So with that, we are on to new business. We have a request from Counselor Pomashano for discussion consideration of a town administrator and town planner to present an update. So Jim, I thought I'll give you the floor.
Great, I appreciate that, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. And I, I know that I'll turn it over to the town administrator in a moment, but I want to thank her and the team for the work and preparing for tonight. I think all of us are very excited to see what will come of the property across the street. So thank you so much for the update tonight. It's an opportunity to see where we are and highlight any gaps or barriers that might be there so that we can work with you to overcome those barriers and see that come to fruition. So I guess with Thalia at the podium, it's all you.
Thank you, Thalia.
Madam President, you can hear from either Karen or myself. I can give you a brief update on what we have done thus far. As you know, the council allocated money to create a plan, which is required as part of the environmental review. So this is a very long and complicated process to actually access the federal funding for this. We actually need to be able to expend some money before we can get the whole boat. So as a result, we needed to have that infusion of money from our ARPA funds to create this plan. Because you need to have some understanding of what kind of environmental status the property has at this particular moment in time as part of the application process going forward. So that's what we're at right now. We have retained a consultant. It's one of the consultants that we presently use for other different reviews, like peer reviews. They're called GZA. They will be meeting with us. We will have one in-person meeting coming up, and then a virtual meeting later on. They will be drafting one plan that the town will review, and then we'll discuss. And at that point, any, if any changes need to be made to the plan based upon input and from the council or from any other party, we would hear it at that time. There are not there are not many options for what can actually take place at this site because of a number of different factors, including the fact that the, the state right-of-way extends somewhat into the parcel. But we still will hopefully have a robust plan to show what we're proposing for that particular.
Sounds good. Yeah, Karen, do you have anything to add?
Um, well,
Sorry.
Since the time that we initially applied for the federal fund and now, the price of everything has increased significantly. So it's looking like we won't be able to do everything that we had initially requested over there. However, we did submit another request for additional federal funding that we haven't haven't yet gotten any determination. So part of what GZA is gonna help us with, in addition to the environmental review, which is required by the federal government, is engineering. So determining the, these things that we want to put over there and what we might want to put there in the future, making sure that we'll put something there now that's gonna conflict with something we want to put there in the future. So it's it's a session to kind of toss through, you know, what we envision and where, where all those things fit best. So we're actually meeting with them Monday next week.
Sounds good. Awesome. So I look forward to future updates. Do you need anything from us, like a motion or anything? Let us know when there's an update.
Madam Chair, do you have a question?
Or Jim's in a journey, but I'm gonna go with Dan. Go ahead, Dan.
You said GZA Environmental has been hired? Is there any conflict with Mr. Todd Green since he is in a butter to that property? And being able to provide an unbiased and objective engineering report?
So from what I've seen so far, Todd is not working on the project. Eric Beloff is the person who is. That might be a question for us.
I respect Mr. Green. He helped us with the Aqua Protection Overly District ordinance through the planning board. But I just want to make sure that we're fully transparent with the town that one of the abutting property owners does happen to work for that company. And I want to make sure that there's no conflict.
That is a good question, Chris.
Is, I wasn't familiar with this individual. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Is he a principal of that company, an owner, or is he just an employee?
I don't know. I only know this because I was on the planning board. If I we hadn't have done the Aqua Protection Overly District with Mr. Green as, and GZA as the consultant, I wouldn't know any of this.
I honestly didn't know Todd Green worked for them. I mean, I know who Todd Green is. I know the Greens live over there, so, but I couldn't have told you he worked for GZA. But I have not seen his name in connection with any of the
They, they were phenomenal, by the way. Todd was phenomenal. So I'm I've
Get it. It's not, get it. It's not that. It's more of an ethics issue. Go ahead, Thalia.
So just, Madam President, just to speak to that, we have not had any communication with Mr. Green in relation to any component of this application thus far. I, I would imagine that we're not going to because we've continued to work largely with two different parties, one who is Mr. Eric Beloff.
Awesome. Um, I think that's a pretty valid concern that you guys could look into further and make a decision accordingly, really.
Well, so, excuse me.
Yeah.
There are a very limited number of firms that actually do environmental review. And part of it is also that in order to have us use a firm that A, does environmental review, and B, does not require us to go out to bid, it's beneficial for us to use a party that we already have an existing relationship with by having an existing contract with GZA. We initially put out the request to a number of different firms that are already on our on-call list. Some of them don't do environmental review work. Some of them just didn't respond to the request. GZA was one of the parties that did respond.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other council questions? All right, go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just a couple of questions. Just, so the environmental review estimation on how long that takes?
It really depends on what is, excuse me, Madam Chair, it really depends on what the review will ultimately reveal. So they have to do a certain amount of, of work, both on the site and historical review. So one of the things that they did, for example, was they looked at what previous uses had been, had taken place on the site. That was like one of the starting points of what their review entailed. So because the site is not particularly large, I don't think it will take all that long, but we haven't really gotten a definitive timeline of how long that will take. But my estimate, and this is just a kind of back of the envelope estimate, is again, because of the size of the parcel, it probably won't take all that long, but I don't know.
Weeks, months, years? I, I don't know what that, what the estimate would be. Just, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but just
Yeah, it makes sense. Anything? Any kind of estimate? No, nothing. We got nothing.
We're paying them just for the flat project. We're not paying them for the duration of it, right?
So we have retained them for specific deliverables.
Okay.
So it's not as though the meter is constantly running. It's they're going to produce product A. It will be presented. It will be reviewed. They have agreed, as I've mentioned, to attend two meetings, one in person, one virtual. So it's, those are going to be the costs that are associated, which have been specifically delineated, and there we have a contract with them for this specific component of this particular project.
Could I ask that a timeline estimate be requested from them?
I'm sure we could ask when we meet with them on Monday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, oh, I had a couple of questions. I'm gonna do it. Counselor Madnick here with a few questions here. Just the, the federal funds, Karen, remind me, the amount of the federal funds we originally received, and if you don't know, like, what was it around?
Seven hundred and five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five seventy, five seventy-eight.
Five seventy-eight? Okay.
Maybe we shouldn't quote that one. Maybe we, before we, before we quote that, let's check.
Again, just to, and then the request, there was a request for additional funding. Do, how much did we request for additional funding or questioning?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what that request was for, how much.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea of what we would have so that when a design comes back, we know what we're working with, right? Whatever that amount is. And that's something we can have for that meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
On Monday. And then Karen, the original plan, and I know it was, I'm going back now three years, I think. There was a basketball court. There was like a little pavilion thing. Is, and I then summoned some pickleball, and everyone went crazy. Is that still the plan?
So the initial was pavilion that includes plumbing with bathrooms, picnic tables, playground, basketball court, all the engineering. It's pretty much down to the pavilion and the engineering. So the phase two request that we haven't been awarded yet. The reason pickleball came up is because a lot of people were like, you know, pickleball is really a new thing, basketball not so much. So the, the second request, if I remember correctly, was for the playground in pickleball courts. I would have to look back.
I can't recall if we scuttled the playground because we just redid Beaver River. Did we, didn't we put that on because we had Beaver River?
Include the playground, but
Okay.
Doesn't mean we can't make changes.
And the only other question I had, Madam Chair, for whomever, was, Todd, I know you said we have limited options based on space. Is it easy enough on that Monday meeting so we have a map of that and then understanding what the actual acreage that we can use just from a for a layman's view of what is possible, and then we can have that conversation? If we can, at that meeting, have the maps available so we have an idea.
It definitely is bigger than what you see, just for context.
It does go up the hill a bit. I'm not sure if we're necessarily going to actually put things up the hill. I think that might have some kind of engineering implications that
For sure.
we would have to factor in. But I'm, I'm sure that we could get a map of the property itself and any encumbrances or any right-of-ways or anything like that.
Cool. No, the last comment, I just wanted to No, I just think that, you know, a lot of the people we have conversations with when we're out there talking with individuals and canvassing was a desire to see something come to fruition there. It's a wonderful piece of property adjacent to the town hall to have an outdoor collective space. And I think, I think we can see it happen. So I believe I cut off Madam Chair. I think she was raising her hand.
Yeah, for sure. Karen, do you have more to add?
It's just an interesting point in this whole thing, that this has been a little bit of a nightmare, and we can't get over the environmental review hurdle. The interesting thing is, we've got federal, so this is the federal agency that's been assigned to this is HUD. The federal agency that's assigned to the tower project is USDA. We got that like two years later, and the environmental review is almost complete because USDA completed it for us. But HUD won't do the same.
Yeah.
Right? So it's just
Yeah, I know you guys are stuck in a pickle with the environmental study and everything else, and that's why the prior council allocated our ARPA funds helped push it along. I'm glad for the update. Thank you for bringing it to the table. Can't wait for the next update. Any other council concerns or questions before we move on to the next item? Oh, Thalia's got something. Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you for allocating that money. I know that the council has changed, but I'd like to thank the previous council. I'd like to thank the current council because that really has enabled us to be able to move this further than we would have been able to without that infusion.
For sure. Awesome. All right, so on to our next item, which is my item, a request for discussion and consideration to remove the membership restrictions of the school committee and the recreation commission for the two-fiftieth commission. For those in the public, because council can see it, this is a request directly from that commission. I'm the council liaison to that member, to that board, and also the chair. So they asked me to put this forward. So I'm gonna discuss a little more, but I'm gonna throw a motion on the floor first. Motion to approve the request to remove the membership restriction. Motion to approve the request to remove the membership restrictions of the school committee and recreation commission from the 250th commission. I have a second. Thank you. Um, we as a commission are almost full. We don't have a recreation commission member. We used to, before I got voted off, and now sits next to me. Um, but we're having trouble kind of refill that seat. And we find that you, you get a lot of the same faces a lot, and we want to open this up to new people, or maybe somebody who wants to help out in this commission, but isn't necessarily on the recreation commission. In our discussion, we looked across the resolution and noticed we didn't really have a need to have one member represent the Charahoe School District as well. We actually have two Charahoe school committee members on the board, but still find that to be unnecessary, even though there's two of them there. But we did find it really important to have a representative of the historical society, which we also have two members of the historical society on the board. Just because it's a historical event, and also a member of council, just because the event is going to be statewide and really big, so we wanted to make sure that, that was there. So with that, do I have any questions from council? Nope. All right.
Comment, I think it's a great idea.
Great. So we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Ginsmore?
Yes.
Maddenick?
Yes.
Palomashano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox? Yes. Thank you all. Onto the request of Counselor Maddenick for presentation of a community choice aggregation by Mike Murphy, which I understand is going to be here.
Sorry, so was the already, are you going to adopt a resolution?
Do we need a resolution in front of us to adopt?
Do, because the resolution that formed that committee dates those two members should be a member of each of those that you just rescinded, so
Right.
so you need to have a new resolution. And just strike those two things.
Right. So with that resolution isn't in front of us today, so I assume by approving the request, we then get a new resolution? Or can we?
You could, or you could
Just approve it?
You have a resolutions and that we could just remove those member.
Could be an amendment to the existing resolution.
It can't because it was a previous council that made that resolution, so
Okay.
Either way.
So I just didn't think that we'd approve a resolution out in front of us, but that's what you want us to do?
You have the last draft.
Right.
Or I could bring it back.
I don't, I think, I mean, getting it into two meetings is a little excessive, so I'll make a motion to approve a resolution exactly like the one before without section two paragraph, point one.
Charahoe member and the recreation.
Right.
And then it would, the above language is the same, that it would consist of seven numbers.
Okay.
It would only be a town council member and a historical reservation number would be the two restricted restrictions of the seven numbers.
Okay. I think that makes sense.
Second. So it's, Madam President, so the action is voting on a resolution, making those changes. That's, so that's the, that's the motion that's the action.
Yeah. Right. So thank you so much for clarifying. Any council concerns or questions on that motion? All right, roll call vote. Counselor Ginsmore?
Yes.
Maddenick?
Yes.
Palomashano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox? Yes. Government. All right. So, um, Community Choice Aggregation by Mike Murphy. It's my attorney who's here. Do you have anything you want to say before we invite him up?
Yes, please. Just a little bit of introduction here. So this was in our communications at the last meeting. It was really interesting. I'm always looking at a way to save money. This has to do with utility aggregation. Mr. Murphy will provide some more information about it. I just want to go through a couple of details, just to note to the public that this is an informational presentation, and, you know, depending on what we hear tonight, there might be future action by the town council, but I, I felt like this is worth at least getting the information out there. So community choice aggregation is currently authorized in 10 states in the United States, so this is not, you know, something that is only happening in Richmond. It's not quite implemented yet. New Hampshire and Virginia. There are four other states are actively investigating, Arizona, Colorado, Connecticut, Michigan. Almost all the states in New England already have this authorized. And potential other states are going to add this are Oregon, Washington, and New Mexico. Further, more locally, there are seven towns in Rhode Island that currently have CCA. That's Barrington, Central Falls, Narragansett, Newport, Portsmouth, Providence, and South Kingston. So if the town council decides to go forward with this and take some action, we actually have examples from other towns that, that we can look at to adopt a process to move forward. Barrington has a really good website and go check out. Let me just see if I got that. Yeah, so it's called the Barrington Community Electricity Aggregation. They have a really good website, really good FAQs. I think it's worth taking a look at. But basically what, what happens here, and I'll let Mr. Murphy speak more to this in more detail, but if the town purchases electricity in volume, we can get a volume discount. And we all know over the last couple of years, utility rates have skyrocketed. It's been one of the things that has really pinched people. And to me, if, if we save fifty dollars a month, a hundred dollars a month, and the community benefits from it, then I'm all for it. So I'm excited to hear about this. I hope we get some good information and then, you know, potentially the town council takes some action.
For sure. Thank you.
Very much.
Mr. Murphy? Thank you for joining us today.
Pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Yeah.
Thank you for the excellent introduction. My name is actually Stuart Ornsby. Mike Murphy set up the meeting and I'm here on his behalf.
Thank you.
Yep. And you'll see on the first slide there, there's a couple of companies mentioned. So Mike Murphy, for example, works with Freedom Energy. Just for the record, and by getting this Stuart Ornsby, and I work on behalf of Colonial Power. We're two companies sort of partnered together doing this throughout the week. And so I'm just going to sort of tee off of the terrific introduction. I'll skip over the, the company information. You can read that at your leisure. Other than just to mention here with this slide, so we're currently working on behalf of now well over a hundred communities in Massachusetts. So Colonial Power Group, for example, has been doing this for a better part of twelve years. You can see that all the communities there that we're working with. We're now working with eleven communities in New Hampshire. And in Rhode Island, we're working with the town of Westerly. Westerly has an approved plan. They haven't launched yet, but they're getting underway. So, so the other community in Rhode Island, for example, Great Barrington that you mentioned, they are working with a different energy consulting company, but, but the programs are very similar. So what we're talking about here is, as, as described in the lead-in, we're talking about electricity and the opportunity for residents in town to save money relative to Rhode Island Energy. And so in Rhode Island, which is true in a lot of states around the country, there's the opportunity for customers to shop for electricity. You have Rhode Island Energy who will deliver the, the electricity. They're the regulated monopoly company. But for a long time, you as an individual consumer, businesses in town have had the opportunity to choose your own electricity supplier, the company that's providing the electronics. Now that's been very well established, has been very successful for large commercial customers. Commercial enterprises for better part of twenty years have been doing very well for themselves, saving money on their electricity bill. Residential customers have a mixed bag. You, you've been able to choose your own supplier. A lot of individuals do that. Maybe fifteen to twenty percent on average of, of people do that. But it takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, and you have to be extremely careful. It's, it's the unfortunate reality that the supply company is offering that kind of service. You get, they get you in with a teaser rate. Maybe they give you a Visa gift card. You save money for six months. Life goes on. You forget about it, and all of a sudden you're on a whole over rate that's three times your original rate. So, so the, the advantage of, of what the Rhode Island Legislature did with this aggregation program is they allow a town to act on behalf of its residents to form a large buying, you say, buying in bulk. And perhaps a little more important than, than, than the large volume, but it's being able to be more strategic in your purchases relative to what Rhode Island Energy gives you. So Rhode Island Energy follows a process. It's dictated to them by the Utilities Commission. And so they buy power every six months, and, and they're indifferent as to what the market may be doing at that time. And so what we've seen, as you alluded to, there have been occasions when just by dumb luck, they bought power at a really high time in the market. And, and those costs get passed on to customers. With an aggregation program, you know, administered by our company, what we're doing, and we're looking for strategic times to make buying decisions for this large buying pool. And so really what we're doing are the kinds of things that large commercial companies are doing on their home. And really, what you're doing is you're standing up yet another option for residents in, in your town. So they would still have the option to buy electricity on their own. They still have the option to stay with Rhode Island Energy if they prefer. This is just one more option that they can take advantage of. Now, the one key element that, that we all have to understand is what the legislature did in order to make it possible to have this large buying pool, it's what's called an opt-out program. And so what that means is if you decide to go forward, and I'm skipping a lot of administrative steps. Well, I'm fast forwarding to, okay, we're gonna go, we're gonna sign a contract. And what you're doing is you're signing a contract on behalf of any customer who is currently taking their power supply from Rhode Island Energy. And everyone is considered in the program unless an individual decides I want to opt out. So education information is so important because prior to launch, you know, we're, we're, we're having public meetings, we're having information sessions, we're sending a mail in to these individuals saying, look, we think we've done a good thing here. We're, here's the side-by-side comparison. We're going to be able to save you ten, fifteen percent off of your electricity bill. However, if you want no part of that, let us know and we'll opt you out. So everyone's in unless they opt out. That's important. But having said that, if, if someone is away in Florida when this is all launching and they come back and they say, what happened? They can always get out. You can go in and out of the program anytime. There's no entry fee, there's no exit. The, the services that, that people currently enjoy from Rhode Island Energy, those are not interrupted. So if someone's on budget billing, if someone is receiving some financial assistance through Rhode Island Energy, a program like this doesn't interrupt any of that. Energy, any energy efficiency programs. If they have solar on top of their rooftop and they're receiving some net credits from Rhode Island Energy, same thing. They continue to enjoy those benefits without interruption. Rhode Island Energy is still, again, the regulated utility. They're keeping the lights on. They're responsible for reliability, keeping the poles upright and the wires attached. There's it's a single bill. So what happens is all residents continue to get a single bill from Rhode Island Energy. The only thing that changes on that is a single line item. So no longer is it Rhode Island Energy last resort supply, it's the town's program rate. Couple of things that in our experience and working with municipalities, what, what they like to emphasize is one, again, getting the lowest price possible, but also rate stability to try to smooth things out for the residents so that they're not subject to these big price swings that you typically get here in Rhode Island. The third thing is to provide product options. So a lot of times, town will, will offer two or three different products. And what I mean by that is you have the lowest price option, and then maybe another option that adds some more renewable energy content for individuals in town who are willing to pay just a little bit more and know that the power supply is coming from wind turbines or solar or redhead. The, there's no cost to the town for this. Sort of the services we provide are fully turnkey, so our one of our number one priorities is to not impose any more time requirements or, or any cost on the town itself. So our, our services fees is built into the program rate. And then just on the next slide after this, just a few comments on sort of process steps. If, if this is of interest to the council, you would take a vote to move forward, and then there's a few steps that needs to take place after that. This is, this is semi-regulated through the Rhode Island Utilities Commission. So what our company would do is prepare a plan. The plan just outlines some statutory requirements that the, the program is going to be operated consistent with state law. We would conduct a public hearing that's required by statute, allowing the public to comment on the plan or the program at large. If approved, then we would file that plan with the commission for its approval. It takes about three months or so, based on recent history. And then once approved, then we'd look for an opportunity to launch the program. And of course, we wouldn't launch the program unless we could get rates from suppliers that beats the Rhode Island Energy program. So there's a few steps along the way, like if you, even if you were to take this initial vote that yes, we'd like to kind of explore this, there is easy exit ramps without any cost to us. We don't receive any compensation unless you actually launch the program.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that overview. Yeah, I'll open it up to council discussion. Anybody have any questions before? Move on? Go ahead, Mark.
Again. Just a couple, couple of questions. You mentioned that if you're currently in the Rhode Island Energy last resort option, you'll be automatically placed into this program. How about those folks who have chosen their own electric supplier? Do they get put into the program and then have to opt out?
No. So thank you for that. So no, the, because we don't want to disrupt any contract arrangements you may have with a third-party supplier. So no, anyone who is under contract with a third-party supplier, and Rhode Island Energy is very helpful in making sure we understand List A versus List B. So we would only send these opt-out notices to Rhode Island Energy Supply customers. The town may opt to send an informational postcard to those other folks, just letting them know it's available if and when they come off of contract. But no, we want to be really careful that we don't accidentally get someone in.
And you mentioned a services fee that will be on the bill. Is that something in, in addition to what a customer is paying right now?
Right. So, so let's say, so we go out to RFP, let's say the town awards a contract to Acme Company, and the program rate is ten cents a kilowatt hour. And then we would add to that our fee, so the final rate would be ten point one five cents per kilowatt.
So there would be an additional. I understand you will still want to look at the total cost, but there would be a service fee added to the per-kilowatt electron rate. And that, and that's not something that folks are paying to Rhode Island Energy, or are they paying something similar to Rhode Island Energy?
Well, yeah, I mean, Rhode Island Energy rates, so when they go out to procure power supply, similarly, they'll, they'll execute a contract with a rate with a wholesale supplier, and then Rhode Island Energy tax on some administrative costs for, for the work they do to run their
Okay.
Awesome. Any other council questions or concerns?
One clarification.
Go ahead, Dan.
You just mentioned the administration cost from RA Energy. So would your service charge take place of the Rhode Island Energy service charge?
Right. So there, correct. So the, the what appears on your bill, let's assume you're a Rhode Island Energy customer, you just see a single rate through the Utility Commission approval. There, there's the wholesale, wholesale supply, power contract, and then administrative fees associated with Rhode Island Energy. You just see a single rate on your bill. And similarly with this program, just to avoid confusion, there'd be a single program rate.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, go ahead.
So the program would be contingent on the town signing up, and then the townspeople would sign up for what we have received for service?
So, so the, so the town would execute a, it'd be a single contract that the town would sign. Let's say it's ten cents a kilowatt hour. And then we would offer that program to residential customers on an opt-out basis. Individual customers don't have to sign any agreement or the town would.
We currently have constellation through Leica cities and towns.
Okay.
They have a group. And we're already signed up with them.
That's right. So, no, so thanks for that. So the, that's often the question we get is, is this a program that's beneficial for the town's accounts? And, and we advise typically no. I mean, the town's accounts can usually through, through the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns get a better deal, and it just has to do with the usage patterns that, you know, commercial versus residential is more expensive to, to serve a residential customer.
So if we can't sign up for it because we have constellation, can the townspeople still
Yes.
receive?
Yeah, this is really, this is directed at residents and, and small businesses. Yep.
Awesome. I would probably have further plan, questions after we saw the plan. Because the town will be signing a contract on behalf of all the residents. That would bring in Zangari and make sure there's no kind of liability on us.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm understanding is the town signs the contract, the end user, the resident, has the ability to say,
Right.
I don't want. But yes, we would, yeah, absolutely review that agreement, this service provider. And I would give you whatever, answer whatever questions you have, give you an opinion.
For sure. Thank you, Talia. I'm gonna ask her to step up to the podium though, just so she can be heard by the microphone.
I have a question for you through president. So would National Grid or Rhode Island Energy be maintaining the lines? Would they be owning the lines? Okay, that was my first question.
Answer is yes, just for the microphone.
Yeah, the answer is yes. They would still be owning the lines and they'd still be providing maintenance for them as well.
That's right, yes.
And would any easements that presently exist have to change?
No.
Because I know that typically when you have an electrical easement over a piece of property, it's for a specific party and not just any electrical company.
Right, yeah, so none of that would change, right, yep. None of the, none of the easement. So this is really, when, when anyone is entering into a contract for the power supply, it's the electrons that go across the wires here.
Awesome, thank you, Mr. Palmigano.
Yeah, just had one quick question. Why is it an opt-in and, or opt-out, not opt-in? Why is it set that way?
Right, and, and that's sort of critical for these programs to be successful. If, because there have been, companies have attempted opt-in programs over the years and they just haven't been successful. I mean, it's very difficult to get people to sign up for a large buying pool. What makes this work and, you know, it's been successful in a lot of communities in New England. You do it on an opt-out basis and that allows a large buying pool, allows a community to get competitive rates.
Good question. Councilor Dinsmore had a question as well?
Is there a minimum number of residents you need?
No, and, and what's interesting in the, there's a bit of a misnomer with sort of the buying on scale. So you would think, okay, the larger the community, I'm gonna put words in your mouth. You may be thinking, well, must be Providence or Boston is gonna get a much better rate than our town can because of its size. So, so Boston is one of our clients, right? And when you look, and we have about a hundred or so communities across Massachusetts, when you look at the rates that each community has, Boston's kind of in the middle. It really has to do with when the town happens to be going out and buying its power supply, making its own decisions on term length and so forth. So it's the, the size threshold that you're asking, the kind of answer is no. I mean, the town is sufficiently large enough to attract competitive suppliers. It's, when some of the towns we've worked with that might have like seventy people, that gets to be problematic, that's really smart. But you're, you're well above that threshold of getting attractive.
Awesome. Any other questions from council? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So according to the action plan here, is this something we want to have a, that we, if we want to move forward with, do we want to put a motion in place to adopt it? And ask them to go forward so that way we can see a plan. As you mentioned, there were a few exit ramps. I can see one right after we see the plan. I can see another right after the public hearing, which I'm really excited about because that way the public can come and share how they feel about it. But what does the council think?
Oh, please, council, your motion.
No, I want to hear from you first, Jim.
Sure, thank you. I was just gonna say, you know, it, you know, on paper, it sounds like it's an opportunity potentially to save the residents some money. So I think it would be worthy to see a plan if there's no commitment. That way we can see more detail what it's about. You know, I'm, I'm still stuck on the opt-in, opt-out thing a little bit because it, you know, you're gonna have a lot of people that just don't pay attention and then suddenly they're like, wait, what? But if it's saving them money, I'd want to see what that, that actual savings was. And I think we put a little bit of money back in people's pockets. That's great if we can help if they choose to do it.
For sure. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, actually, when I echo some of what Jim said, the other thing is that while this is a great presentation, Freedom and Pony aren't the only ones that administer these programs. And so I kind of had a question for the solicitor and Karen on if we move forward with something like this. I don't think personally that it's a great idea to stick with one particular company until we get an understanding of what other companies also offer for their services. So if we were to do something like this, like what is the process? Do we have to go out to bid to get this service? Should we, do we approach other companies that facilitate this?
Karen, is that something you can't answer or?
I mean, I think if other companies want an opportunity, I think we probably have to give it, you know, an opportunity to give us a proposal.
How do we do that logistically?
I'm not even sure. I mean, I guess we would post it. We could post it as a bid like we do for everything else.
Yeah, that makes sense. Chris, did you have something to add?
Make a request for a proposal.
Yeah.
And, and see, see what you get. And then I, I like Counselor Madden, I mean, just, I like his idea of maybe there's another, maybe this company is, is the most competitive, but maybe not.
No disrespect, sir.
Yeah. No.
Have to do it through the best interest of the town here.
Yeah, for sure. So you want to formulate that, no motion for us?
I want to know if there's any other feedback from other counselors, Madam Chair.
I've opened the floor a few times, so go ahead.
I think it's a great idea. Same with you guys.
Awesome. Go ahead, Dan.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to request the town administrator, along with the town solicitor, to draft a request for proposal for initial aggregation options.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any just council discussion on that motion? Awesome. Seeing none, with the oral call vote, Councilor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mandick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. Thank you so much for presenting to us and we'll definitely get back to you. Keep a lookout for that best proposal that'll come up on the town website. Sign up for notify me, residents as well. I love to plug that thing when I can. All right, moving on to an update from Counselor Palmigano for the Richmond Economic Development Task Force. So with that, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just looking just to confirm the date of the meeting, for the EDC meeting. So I wanted to put this on the, the agenda just for discussion. There's no vote that's being taken, but just to keep the public aware that this is still in progress and moving forward. I've gotten a lot of feedback from people who've reached out after the first meeting to give suggestions, praise on the idea, feedback. So the next step in the process will be, I am going to be going before the Economic Development Commission on Monday, January thirteenth. Now, I couldn't find it quickly on the website. It was supposed to be at three PM. I think there may be an error that it's posted at nine thirty. So I'm not looking at it right now. I don't know, Aaron, if you're looking at it there or you can see it. Can you, can you? Yeah, so, and I know that Counselor Dinsmore and myself were going to be going and going to that meeting. And I know that earlier in the day is not optimal. So I'm hoping it's at three o'clock. Worst-case scenario, I will move my schedule around to go and meet whenever because I want to make sure that I have the opportunity to share the thoughts with the EDC and make sure that they understand from my perspective with the plan, how it's, how they're a critical component to the entire idea of the task force.
So, sorry, good? Sorry, did not mean to cut you off. I did pull it up on the Secretary of State's website and I don't see any meeting posted for Monday, but they can post it anytime, forty-eight hours in advance. So there's plenty of time to work that out and get it properly posted.
Good. So it should, it's supposed to be at three o'clock in the afternoon. So that'll be wonderful. So we'll, we'll make sure that's it sorted. And I'll be reviewing, I, I have some notes here, but I'm reviewing kind of what my thoughts and reasons for it, how I've reviewed the comprehensive plan and looked at what the comprehensive plan denotes for the EDC. And I think we'll see where, you know, there's a clear delineation in my mind of what we should have in scope for the EDC and how there's other support structures that can come into play to help us all be more successful in, in having some of these outcomes. It is, it is focusing on economic development being a way to increase commercial revenue in the town, but also the economic vitality of the town, affording opportunity from everyone, from a farmer's market up to new light industrial coming to the town. So I think, we don't want to boil the ocean, but I think the idea is to get the approval from council to approve the idea of the task force, form the task force, set some objectives and desired outcomes, and then we will report back on our progress there. And with individuals having a seat at the table, I will also be taking the approach based on the recommendation from council to create or to request, I've done a draft resolution, but of course it would be crafted. But the, the resolution request would call for certain seats from individuals being part of a seven-person board. So it would be very structured of who would be part of that as far as the helping on that task force. So that's the update I just wanted to give today to keep people in the loop of what's going on. Please come to the meeting on the thirteenth if you want to learn more and have some questions. And I think, Madam Chair, that's all I wanted to just give an update now.
Awesome. Any questions or comments from council?
Just one, one comment. I think this is great for removing some of the silos that we have in town between boards and commissions and putting a bunch of volunteers from these different areas in one room and start to sell some town boards. So I'm looking forward to seeing what Jim comes up with.
Jim and Jeff.
Yes, sorry, Jeff. Yes, well, Jim and Jeff.
No problem.
Yeah, I'm excited to have the Economic Development Commission involved because that was my concern last time is it definitely just seemed like a duplicative group of that. And while I think the objectives and ideas are great, I want to see the, I want to see the Economic Development Commission involved with this because we're only on council for two years. If we make a resolution to create a board, only valid for that council, from my understanding, you know, it doesn't really keep going. So if we want it to, and then, you know, we don't win reelection or whatever. So I really want the, the boards and commissions to be enabled and move, move through that. I did visit the Economic Development Commission during my prior term. I showed them the comp plan that you, that you mentioned, created a little spreadsheet for them to, you know, help get that going. I don't have the time for the nine AM meeting either, so also had to stop doing that. But I appreciate you going to their meeting and communicating with them to get them going forward. Not to put you guys on the spot, but we have two EDC members here. Do you guys have anything you want to add about this commission? You can say no, say no. All right, no, they're good. Please just state your name for the record.
Hi, Jim Brier, Richmond resident. Yeah, we talked with Counselor, I don't know if he'll be coming to our meeting next week. But we do have an Economic Development Commission right now that's in place. This is just a proposal, correct?
This is a proposal to found a, to establish a task force of which the EDC would have a representative to be part of that wider organization. So yes, it is a proposal to found a task force. And if I may follow up, the reason why, there's things that are certainly identified that need to be done that are outside the scope of what I see from the EDC perspective. And we'll talk more about that on Monday.
And how many members were you talking?
The proposal, because it's not approved, would be a seven-member board. It would be two councils and these would be people appointed by council. So two council members would be appointed. I'm gonna do this from memory. It would be an EDC, it would be a planning board, so one, two, EDC, planning board, recreation commission. And then there is an opportunity for a business leader in the community and a community leader. So someone who's involved, whether it be a nonprofit leader that's part of the community. So those would be the seven. You know, you may be asking yourself, okay, that sounds good up till I get to the Recreation Commission. Part of the thing that's really an opportunity is to bring back things like farmers' markets to our town where I think the Recreation Commission plays a really critical role and they have, they have the, the ability to help the EDC to bring that to fruition. At the end of the day, I think the EDC is always going to be the, the, the one throat to choke I look to to say, how are we doing from an economic health perspective? But I'm trying to bring more people together to help you have that success.
Okay, well, yeah. It's just, it's just you say seven, I heard seven people. And then at present, there's just only three members of the EDC. We have trouble getting that.
Or we just got one.
We have four now. So, you know, it is tough sometimes trying to get.
And I would only be asking for one member of the EDC to join that for the meetings. They wouldn't be leaving the EDC. They would just also be attending that as a, as a task force member. So for example, take yourself, for example, if you were asked by the EDC to go for council to be appointed to the task force, then the council would say, yes, Mr. Brier, we're gonna appoint you as the task force member representing the EDC. So you would go to that meeting as well.
So obviously you'd be working independently somewhat, somewhat.
Yeah, respectfully, yeah, you would be working independently in the same way that I work independently on the two-fiftieth commission. You know, I don't come to the council and, you know, we have our two-fiftieth commission meetings. So if you were appointed from the EDC member to be a part of the task force, then you wouldn't, you, you, it would be separate in my eyes. I mean, you could report back to them in the same way I just reported back to council now about a need we had. But I mean, that's the vision I'm seeing that's happening with it. But there's a person I care about the volunteers, so maybe I'm missing.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the intention, for example, I'll use recreation as an example because I was on that commission as the chair. If a person sits a recreation commission on the task force and we talk about our objectives for 2025 and we say one of the, the outcomes we want to see is to have in the summer, we want to have five sessions of a, a farmer's market involving local farmers. Okay, recreation and EDC are gonna work together. Then Jim, if I was to represent me, me, Jim, being on the recreation commission, it's okay, you go back to recreation commission, carry this, put it on your agenda for discussion, see how you can help to support that. So we're really getting the economies of scale of bringing all those great minds together to bring these things to fruition. So we're not operating separate from what our boards and commissions do. We're the advocate going back and say, hey, here's an idea. This is what we're gonna drive, let's work together and do this. Kind of getting everybody on the same page.
Okay.
I hope that makes it, thank you.
No, it's good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further council questions or concerns? All right, on to communications.
Motion to file.
Second.
Thank you, we got a motion and a second. Any council discussion? All right, Councilor Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mandick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. All right. Next, do I have a motion to go into exec?
Go move.
I need somebody to ask for the floor because I have to read all of it. Sorry, don't want to read all of it, just, I'll make it. Motion to go into executive session pursuant to RIGL forty-two, forty-six, five, A two. I'm just making sure that's it. Yes, that's it, thank you. I got a motion, I got a second. Roll call vote, Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Uh, Mandick?
Yes.
Palmigano?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Wilcox, yes. All right, to the upstairs.
Thank you.
Yes, we saved me from having to go all the way over the.
Is there, is there, is there a downstairs we can go to for him?
We're good? Awesome. We got a motion to exit executive session.
So moved.
Thank you. Got a motion? Have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Roll call vote, Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Madnick.
Yes.
Palmigiano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Motion to seal the minutes of the executive session, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Got a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. We're gonna roll call vote. Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Madnick.
Yes.
Palmigiano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. All right. We want to disclose that one motion was made in executive session by myself, Councilor Wilcox. Motion to authorize Attorney Maruzak to submit a confidential memorandum to the mediator. It was seconded by Councilor Madnick and it passed unanimously. Do I have to read everyone separately?
Yes, you do.
All right, roll call vote. We had Councilor Dinsmore vote yes. Councilor Madnick vote yes. Councilor Palmigiano voted yes. Councilor Reynolds voted yes, and I also voted yes. We covered everything? Leaving exec? Awesome. Got a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Madnick.
Yes.
Palmigiano.